All right, I'd ask Mr. Goins if he would lead our prayer.
Prayer of heaven and Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here this afternoon and to discuss the furor of the Surry County schools. Father, we ask that you would just lead in guidance and the things we say and do that might be an investment for starting employees and our children. Father, we thankful for all of our other many blessings. We're thankful for this country we live in, thankful for our families and all in many ways you bless us every day. And we especially thankful for thy son Jesus Christ. We God to reach all of us in the name of thy son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, board members. And I guess I should go by the script and say call the meeting to order instead of welcoming everybody, right? So we are, we are now in session. I would ask that to get a motion to approve the minutes with, it says on here it's closed session if needed. Dr. Reese has a legal issue that we need to discuss with Mr. Johnson. He'll be joining us by phone, I believe, when it comes to that time. So it's on here as number four, but just want to make sure we include that. So we get a motion to...
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Wilson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pletzo. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, no. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Jones, 10-year facility plan, part two. We're gonna have a series of these, it looks like, huh?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, thanks.
Does everybody have the slides on your...
Thank you, Doug. Board members, I'll just repeat what we discussed last month. This is the second installment of our 10-year facility planning meeting. Robert previously went over some of the data we looked at 10 years ago in making some decisions and changes to facilities in a fiscally responsible way. And so today, he's gonna continue that discussion, which is going to in turn lead up to a facility planning retreat with Bill Powell, whom we've hired to do a new 10-year facility study. So all the, all the information you're getting that you got last month and you're getting this month will help as we get ready for this sizable meeting with Mr. Powell. So, Robert, thanks for putting all this together.
Yes, sir. So last month, we, we talked about the evaluation process of the 10-year facility plan that was created by Mr. Powell. And today, we're gonna touch base on a couple of other areas, enrollment and capacity, and then lastly, conceptual cost and how that affects, can affect the planning process. So why do we analyze? So we do this, this allows us to be able to create a snapshot of where the students are and the capacity of our schools. That information was gathered in 2013 from our Surry County School Property Account Book, which was created by Boney Architects back during their tenure of being our Architectural Firm and it lists all of our schools. It has the floor plans, the acreage, all of those types of things, as well as we use the 2010 Facility Needs Survey, that is a requirement every five years by the state, Department of Public Construction, School Planning Division. And then also, we sent out to all the schools and requested a map of each school and those locations and types of educational spaces that were being used at that school. So those were the type things that we used in order to develop that. So some other information that we, that was used was county population shifts, live births, enrollment trends. And at that time, Surry County schools received 70% of those births. Also, how reducing class size can affect capacity and that, you know, I look at that as the recent state classroom mandate that we had a few years ago and how that can affect our, the use of our classrooms and change the layouts of the schools. The effect of enrollment increases and decreases, which we know right now, we're, we're in a decrease type situation with our enrollment. Also finding ways to shift and accommodate students in our current buildings. And that could be because of a specific new program that's introduced to the school or to the system that we want to develop. And so that could change how that building is currently being used. Also find ways to change the building for, as I said, those evolving educational programs. It could be CTE, could be anything like that, that could affect the building layout. And then, of course, you have to watch the population shifts and the changing birth rates in order to plan for the future. So you'll see when Mr. Powell gives his presentation, there'll be a section that will talk about those type things, the shifts in the population of the areas of the county, as well as birth rates. So that's very interesting stuff you'll see later on. I think you'll enjoy that. So forecasting the population. We analyze that usage and forecast to determine, you know, do we have enough space in our schools, enough classrooms to deliver and support those programs which we have in place? Also, you know, for the short term, you want to make sure that you've got enough. Potential impacts could be, well, some of the census data that was looked at from 2010 to 20 showed a, shows a .1% decrease in our population each year, as well as vacancies due to those enrollment declines. So analyzing that data can, can identify things like what is there in the school? You know, what types of core classrooms and support areas and all that stuff? And then what is not there? What do we need? Might be we need more office space or we need a larger cafeteria, as well as program equity, you know, our Title IX situations in, you know, in our high schools. So future enrollment, this data must be assessed also from outside sources to help forecast the future. And back in 2013, that facility plan, Mr. Powell used Surry County birth rates and that history, as well as the state ADM growth analysis, which is provided by VPI. So in 2013, that study outlined that our enrollment would be declining through 2023, which has seemed to kind of be the trend. So after the facilities have been evaluated and enrollment data gathered and looked at, we, he took that information and gave each school a, a building and each school a score of either poor, adequate, or good. The sizes in the, in the schools as small, okay, or good. Used that to determine equity amongst the grade levels in schools, as well as the capacity and then future enrollment. So we took that data and that data helps develop future building plans, such as, do we keep, do we keep the school as it is? It doesn't need any changes, it's adequate? That could be based on, you know, it's a newer facility and it doesn't need any, anything? Or maybe it just needs a few repairs, like a chiller replacement or lighting upgrades or whatever? Or do we demolish it and replace it, which is what the first Facility Needs Survey and Plan showed us that we needed to do at Dobson and Mount Park? We needed to demolish two older 1948 and 52 era buildings and replace those with a newer, more modern building? And also, you know, to repurpose buildings that we already have and maybe move some educational spaces around to another building to help offset and create space for, once you do a new building? So after reviewing those facility conditions and the capacity of each school and the enrollment, the next phase of that was you put a conceptual cost estimate on each school. So that could be the overall cost for minor renovations or major renovations, or even new construction and additions. We also considered, you know, needed school program revisions, you know, maybe expand the banding course area because, you know, that program has grown and is doing successfully well and we don't have adequate space. As well as looking at the future population adjustments, he made, he made some major adjustments in the layout of that school just based on that. So short-term and long-term planning. The short-term plan, you focus on the current critical needs. An example of that was in, in our first one was Dobson Elementary and Franklin and Mount Park. That showed to be our most critical needs at that time in 2013. And then the long-term plan of that same was to look at the high schools. So additional properties were, it also showed that additional properties were going to be needed if we expanded our high schools. And we were fortunate and worked with the county board of commissioners to secure some additional properties at that two of our schools, so, so that we are ready and set for the next 10-year plan that will address the high schools. So the importance of creating this plan, it allows our current county leaders to plan for a long-term budget, as well as it shows the students and the public that there is a sustainable plan in place. And then it also ensures that we are maintaining and creating 21st century schools for the future of our Surry County students. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question? Maybe either one of you knows this, maybe we haven't got that far along, but we know that the population was going to reduce and Bill's study showed it. How does it compare with what he predicted? You know, because we know it came down pretty well. Is it in line or...
Right on the line.
Right on the line, okay. So that's why we do it, right? So, okay. I just wondered, we never talked about it, we noticed the decline, but...
I didn't want to, I didn't want to, what's it say? I didn't want to steal his thunder.
Okay, all right. We won't tell you.
Very accurate, very accurate.
Robert, how's the gentry middle school situation as far as what you see? I mean, I, I think the building's pretty, it's in poor shape and the gymnasium...
Well, I mean, it's 1976 construction era. It is starting to show a lot of signs of wear and tear. There are some, some issues with some of the concrete supporting the exterior shelters and stuff.
Gymnasium's horrible.
All of that, well, in the day, it was probably sufficient, but now, you know, of course, it's not sufficient and it doesn't meet the needs of the school as far as adequate space, safety, and there's a lot of things that come into play, but that is addressed in both. The first one, it was pointed out, you know, of course, long-range planning, and I'm not sure where Mr. Powell has that in his next approach, but I'm sure that it will be in there and something to consider.
Do you have anything to say about consolidating gentry in that view? The schools that Mr. Powell's, is that a recommendation, possibility?
I think he's got several options for the board to consider based on facts. And I go back to the 2013 plan. I think he laid out four phases of, of the board really trying to make an impact on schools. First phase was the three elementary schools being the top priority. The second phase were the three high schools being the next area of priority. The third phase included renovation of gentry. And that was to the 10-year plan, 10 years ago. So gentry was on the list as a singular school back 10 years ago, and I know we looked at some of the precast issues there. I know he, Bill and I have had some conversations and he has another meeting with Robert on Thursday, and I know they're gonna discuss that. And when we have our half-day retreat with the board, I think those are the things he's gonna want to get into in depth with the board, in looking at all the, the needs of the schools, the size of the schools, where your population shifts are, to give you multiple options to consider. And I do believe that's one of them.
Have we set dates for those retreats?
We have not set dates for those retreats. Bill's, Bill's been dealing with some health issues and we're gonna work with him to find a date that's amicable for him and when we think he'll be, be healthy to be able to meet with the board for that, that long. And I think he can do it just standing and sitting, standing and sitting. That is something that, Doug, once Robert has his meeting on Thursday, we just need to kind of start nailing down a date for that, to that half-day retreat. I thought we'd do a half-day to start with, and if we need more time, we could schedule another half-day. Does that sound, sound okay? It's a lot of information to absorb, and that's another reason we put this into these work sessions, to kind of crack your notes. So you, when you see all this stuff, it'll be, it'll be a notebook thick of information where he's done a study at, at every school, plus our central office facilities. So you'll be able to kind of also see where they rank in comparison.
Will there be some, a discussion in there about what we can do with the Technology Center to see if it's long-term, we can look at opinion-based, things like that?
Bill will give you some ideas.
Good.
Yep. Okay. And general opinions, you know, the thing about Mr. Powell is he's an expert. He's done this work his entire career. He has 20-plus years of experience in Forsyth County schools, but he also has worked in the private sector and has done this kind of work. When it comes to planning and looking at the numbers and really trying to help you plan for the future, those are the things that he excels at. I think you'll, you'll realize that real quickly with the forethought he's put into the plan and then the presentation. So he's gonna, he's gonna come to the table with multiple options for you to consider, and they're just that, they're just options, they're ideas, some you may like, some you may not like. But that's, that's why it's important to have these 10-year plans, so that we can plan for the future responsibly in thinking about how we really meet the needs of our students. We've done that, just think about, think about purchasing the land that we got at Surry Central and East Surry and now at North Surry. I mean, those were really, I'm not sure that without the 10-year plan 10 years ago, we, we would have been able to purchase that land, because it's really given us some, a head start on the future. And I think tonight's meeting with the commissioners and discussing architectural fees for master campus planning is a, that's a secondary conversation that's got us to where we are tonight in having that conversation with commissioners.
And I do believe they're receptive, like you were talking about one of the reasons we're doing it, they're receptive for us working together to come up with that plan with commissioners, and it helps us all at least know what's coming. So I think that's a good idea.
Well, it's us on the outside. You know, it's not my suggestion or anyone else's, it's somebody that's on the outside of the organization looking at the big picture, and I think that, that's very important to all the stakeholders.
And I believe the commissioners trust Bill, they, they know and they've worked with him, so that's a good thing.
The 1/10th percent decrease in population per year, does that count? Surry County? Home County?
Yes, yes.
Including the city areas?
Uh, yeah, I guess, I think his, his map, I think, did include the cities as well. So I guess, yes, sir, I think that's correct.
To give you an idea now, Surry County's growing .1% as a county versus 2.5% statewide, so we're still a little bit behind, I guess you could say. And the population's coming in or retirees coming in.
No, no students. Couple of them, two.
Yeah, there was a note in there, you said the population was 70%. Our Surry County school students represented 70% of the population, which is right along with what we have now. We're about 72%.
Of all births?
Yeah, of all births. So that's, seems like there's no shifting, major shift in population.
That's correct.
Okay.
I will say this, from a policy standpoint, 10 years ago, Bill had no idea that vouchers would be where they are today, nor you couldn't predict that COVID would occur, and you can't, couldn't predict that there would be a surge in homeschool students. I mean, you know, there are outside factors outside of just live births and the birth rate and the death rate. So those are the things that, again, demographers, and looking at his numbers, they're, they're pretty spot-on, even including those things.
Okay. Do you have a question? Okay, so next month is part three, or is it the next phase is waiting to talk with Bill?
Next phase will be a meeting with Bill.
Okay, good. Look forward to hearing some of his ideas and some of the numbers, because it's, it's not, not gonna be a five-year impact on the school system, it's gonna be a 20-year impact like a, like a middle or elementary school would be.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. At the right time. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. All right, so now, do I have a grant discussion?
So board members, I'm asking for your input tonight on the needs-based grant. So we're getting this grant earlier in the year than we previously have received this grant. So I believe last year, this grant was either due in December or due in January. Okay, thank you, thank, yep. So you can see, now we're in August. And so remember, there's a 5% match that we have to get county commissioner approval before we can apply for this grant, the county commissioner chair and the board of education chair, there's, there's, that's part of the application process. And so you've got three attachments on item agenda 2.2, and...
So now it's due September 13?
Yeah. So this is the page, the assurance page, that you have to agree to in concept and the county commissioners have to agree to in concept. If we're awarded a needs-based grant, there's a 5% level match. And so I've contacted the county manager and asked him to put us on the September county commissioner agenda for, for that approval. Our application is due September 13. So we have a little time, but not a lot of time, to really make some decisions. So for the last two cycles of the needs-based grant, we have essentially the maximum amount that's available, and again, I'm going on assumptions, but we've looked at the three high schools being our, our top priority. You've sta, you've stated that, that's your top priority. We can apply for $62 million per high school. Well, per project, let me back up, per project. In this application, and I don't have it right here in front of me, but it basically says each county can apply for one grant per, or one grant per project or one project per county, or there's language like that. We cannot exceed the 62 million if you're gonna apply for a high school. As you know, we've been unsuccessful applying for the full amount. And what I wanted to talk to you about tonight is gathering your input, do we break that amount up? And do we only apply for a portion of the amount? And if we do so, what does that, what does that look like? And so I go back to our budget presentation on April 30th, we talked to the commissioners about asking for architectural fees to do master campus planning plus Phase One Design. And I, I look at Phase One Design being our kitchens and cafeterias at Surry Central and at East Surry, because I think we all agreed in the meeting we had on March 20th with the county commissioners, when we did the tour of Surry County, we all got in the bus, I think they all realized that the kitchens and cafeterias were really a top priority. Bill, in his 10-year facilities plan, has done some conceptual cost estimates of what it would cost for, you know, to do those projects. What we need, I need your input tonight is, do we break the project up? Do we apply for one, one project and see where that takes us with the needs-based amount that could potentially be less than the 62 million? It would be helpful if we received any of the grant funding, but a smaller amount might, we might be likely to receive a smaller amount. One significant change since last year's grants is we've gone from a Tier One county status to a Tier Two county status, and I do believe priority's being given to Tier One counties. Last year, I felt like we had a really good shot at getting one of these as a Tier One county. This year, we are back in Tier Two status. So I say all that to say, it's a lot of work to put this together. We've got until September 13th. I've included the application we did last year. We just need to decide how you want us to proceed on this needs-based grant and what information do you need, additional information do you need before you can make that decision?
So what, did we apply for last year's one?
All three high schools. We applied for all three high schools.
62 million each?
We submitted three separate applications, because you can only submit one application per project. So we didn't, we couldn't combine them into one application, because then we would have exceeded the 62 million.
No, you go ahead.
Was it 55 million?
It was 50-some millions. It was 60.
It was 50 two years ago, and then it went up to 62. He was fixing that.
So you, you just, do you think if we applied like for a little over 20 million per each first school, would we be more inclined to receive the grant or less inclined or doesn't make any difference?
I think you're more inclined to receive a grant smaller. I'm just not sure that we want to do three grants, three applications.
What's, anticipate roughly, this is roughly, the cost of the cafeteria is for East Surry and Surry Central?
So roughly...
Rough, very roughly.
I'll tell you what Bill told us two, three months ago, between both cafeterias and what Bill is describing as a cafeteria, which is basically a larger area that you could use as an auditorium, and it's not, you know, kind of, and Bill, you know, you know exactly what Forsyth County's got. So it's a multi-use facility, cafeterias, and in his Phase One, he also included doing some renovation work in the admin areas and...
Repurposing the cafeterias?
Yeah, repurposing the cafeterias.
The old cafeterias?
We were looking at, I believe, 34 million each. No, total.
Total, so 17 each.
Does that include architectural fees?
No.
What does that add to it? Does it keep it under 62? So I think if we, if we can do the architecture, we just lump it into one, one grant, just want to cover two high school cafeterias plus architectural fees, then seems like we need...
With the grant, you can't apply for multiple schools under one grant.
No.
It's, it's one school, one grant.
So we divide it up into two projects, smaller?
I don't think we get if we ask for both of them.
No, I don't either, and it'd be nice to run both of them.
...projects that exceed an aggregate amount greater than the maximum grant award. Aggregate...
So it means there could be multiple then?
And it's, it's a score, I guess. I like the idea of, if we have, if we get approval tonight for architectural fees, if we can show in our grant application that we as a county are taking it upon ourselves to move that process forward, and we could ask for one of the high schools, and then we look at trying to be local, yep? Because I, I agree with you, the less that we ask for, especially since we've been moved to Tier Two, the higher likelihood of us getting something. to tier-two, the higher likelihood of us getting something. I just don't want us to ask for too much and not get anything.
Do we know what the budget this year, last year was like three hundred and twenty-five million statewide?
I don't know what the total is.
I think it's easier for them to say yes to seventeen or eighteen million, given us already doing the work to try to have the architectural thing, everything moving forward, and perhaps looking at it on a local level.
And if we... The county commissioner, or if we're awarded, like, thirty-four million, five percent capacity?
One point seven million.
I may be wrong on this, but if, if they were to give us the design fees tonight, I think that could be, that would be their five percent, but, I may be wrong on that.
Then they can actually get reimbursed for that, correct?
Well, they can through their...
Yep, that is reimbursable.
Do we have a figure on the design fees?
Yes.
Well, it's kinda like, um, it's, it's an estimate of the total now. If we do master campus planning plus phase one, and I called Chris, and, because I had to give him a range, and I, in, in our budget proposal, I think I said anywhere from two-point-two million to three million, because I don't know what the total cost is gonna be, and usually they charge a percentage. Sometimes that's negotiable, but I think, I think you're looking at somewhere between two and three million dollars for total design fees. That's the industry standard that we came up with three, four months ago.
And he's got seven percent in this design fee?
For Bill?
Okay.
So, can we apply for both of them under one, or no?
Or can we apply, well, the two, if they were the same amount? Because it says aggregate, like we did last time, we, we, I'm all three?
Well, it's...
They were separate projects.
But we're just talking about aggregate, that means, console, a compilation of all?
An applicant may not apply for projects that exceed an aggregate amount greater than the maximum grant award amounts listed in any single year.
Sixty-two, I guess.
Is for the high school.
For project.
I just wanted to find two projects, say, say, how much are we estimating one cafeteria? Cafeteria.
Seventy to about thirty-four.
And administrative, do about, single one high school would be about thirty?
Thirty-four for two.
So, that's right. And that would include the repurposing of some of the cafeteria space, like they did at Moore Street, they converted that over to EC space, always.
And then another one and a half in design fees?
Let me ask Robert this question, the thirty-four million that Bill quoted, did that include design fees?
According to this, what I'm looking at is...
Oh, okay.
Seven percent.
You think it did include the design fees?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then if we're, we're at seventeen million, so, are we talking about having to do two at seventeen million, or are we having to do, can we do one at thirty-four? That's, I'm still trying to figure that one out.
I think we said, different schools of different projects.
Yeah, you gotta do two applications.
Okay.
One, one application for each project, but I, I just think that it would go a long way, potentially, and I don't know, because they're government, so who knows, but it potentially would go a long way with us asking for one and trying to do one locally, to show that we're trying to put some skin in the game as well.
When you say one, one's high school completely, or one kitchen cafeteria?
One phase one.
One kitchen cafeteria, I'm right.
Yeah, one phase one, not the entire.
Yep.
So, we're asking for seventeen, and saying, well, on the phase two, try to do the other?
That would be mine, but now, whatever we, as a board, wanna look at, I just think we would have a larger percentage of chance.
Well, I'm, I'm one of those that believes that a larger, a smaller amount has a better chance of getting, so, do you know, you've done a lot of research and looked at the last one, do you know what the largest amount funded for one project was under the last three, twenty-five?
They funded a couple of high schools.
Well, the whole thing?
The whole thing.
But I would also want to speak with commissioners to see what their take is on us trying to do it locally. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I think they were receptive at the retreat we had, but now, if we can put some numbers to it, because I didn't really know. But I, I gotta tell you that I spoke with one of them individually, and the number you're, well, he, he said that was a number he was expecting, so, I don't think they'll be surprised by that number, for two of them. I, I would, I would be in support of, of trying to get enough for two of them, and I know that if we break it into two, and do one for seventeen, and one for eighteen, or one for sixteen, and one for seventeen, include the di, design fees, because I'd love to get the design fees for everything, so that we're ready for the next one, because hopefully it'll come next year, so, and I think they rack and stack all three of ours up together last year, the last two years anyway, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, or something like that.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. So, yeah, I, I don't think asking for all of them is a good idea. I just don't believe this will happen.
You're talking about the sixty-two?
Right. I think, I think the commissioners will help us if we can get, get it for one, possibly two, and they'll help us for...
Well, asking, asking for one project versus asking for two, seventeen million, I, I wouldn't think that would hurt our chances, would you?
I wouldn't think so, but it's still roughly half the...
Since we broke it out into two projects, and then if we get a second on one, maybe commissioners would fund the other. That's been our plan, you know, I mean, we, we sort of set that course in our last budget meeting with, with commissioners. But that, you know, this was sort of our step.
Because what I don't wanna do is not ask for it, and then we can forget it, then the commissioners come back and say, why did you ask for two? Sometimes you're not gonna win the game trying to estimate.
I think you're more up to your one and five, and for two, something like that.
Yeah.
Well, I feel like many managers have been successful the last two years, because they asked for two million and one point five, but at the same time, was that a game, which, which high school was that they built with these funds two years ago?
Well, they're not built yet, they're still...
But it was approved for them.
They're trying to get seven million from the county commissioners, I think it's been...
Yeah, we don't want that.
So, I just wanted to make sure, one application per school campus, so there's, there's here on page five of the grant application, and the twenty-four, twenty-five grant application, and I think that's the same when we did the previous one. But as an aggregate, I think you could apply for the two projects, you'd have to do two separate applications, but you wouldn't exceed the, the total amount, which is sixty-two million, if you, if you ask for thirty-four million.
And that would include the design fees for that, and the long-range plan, which we need anyway.
So, I think really that's the question, do you wanna apply for one high school total, sixty-two million, you wanna apply for one kitchen cafeteria renovation, seventeen, eighteen million, or do you wanna apply for two kitchen cafeteria renovations at thirty-four, thirty-five million?
Well, man, I'd like to apply for two. Are we looking at similar costs?
Phase one?
I mean, yeah, it'd be in our phase one, the cost of the previous...
They're very similar.
I just, I don't want to apply for the total sixty-two million for the high school, because we, we can't do it locally to make up for the other two.
Right, I know.
But I, I would go along with applying for two of the phase ones in two separate contracts, or applications.
And I think the other thing would be one for sixty-two.
Start preparing for, if we only get one of them, we'll do this, if, I know that sentence, if's an awful big word, when you, when you talk about seventeen million dollars, but, that's what we're looking at there.
And more of those design fees have the max between them of two, so we can also show that this is the next step. So, I, I'm good with that.
Okay, so do we have a consensus then, we apply for two projects, one each for each of the high school cafeterias, and the renovations of the space located by the cafeterias, and the master plan, and phase one?
You have the assumption that the design fees are related?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's our best, and that's what the commissioners have been asking us to consider, so I think that's a good move.
Yeah, I think that's a good step, step in our direction, please. Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, so now we have school grant session.
Thank you.
On safety, safety.
Mr. Box, my take is...
Board members, on August, you're, you're looking at an email that we received on August twelfth, actually, that the grant dropped on August ninth, that, that Friday evening, but this is for the SRO officers, this has nothing to do with safety equipment. There may be safety equipment grant after the budget's passed later on, but right now, this is just for SROs, this is a two-year grant that we have been receiving, our grant ran twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and now it's up again. The last time we received two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars through grants, which helped fund six SROs, four middle school, and two elementary SROs. One, I'm asking for permission to pursue the grant again this year. It is due at the end of August, August thirtieth, five P M. And on, with that, do we ask for an additional? And that's where I'm kinda caught too, kind of what you were talking about with the buildings, asking for too much and not, I would love to get back what we got two years ago, to fund six, help fund six SROs, at least that. There are more schools gonna be applying for this, charter schools are now a part of it. I think I mentioned to you the number of school districts I was around at the RISE conference that didn't have any elementary SROs, that they're, so I'm a little worried that the funds that they have, a lot more people are gonna be applying for that.
What's the max you can ask for? Is there a max?
There isn't, there's not a max that you can ask for, I mean, I think there's forty million dollars that the state has, but we've received, like I said, for the past two years, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, and that was to help fund the four middle school, which we, this grant's paid for that several years.
Since twenty thirteen, fourteen?
Yeah, so we've been getting it, and then we got, we added two additional elementary, which we were awarded that, so for a total of six. I would certainly like to request those six again, but if, if you have desire for me to ask for more, I just don't want to...
And it's not all or nothing that they'll give you, so if you ask for eight, they would give you nothing if they would've gave you six? You say the same?
I do, I mean, there's no guarantee of getting the six.
Right.
Yeah, it could be, I wouldn't think we would not get, we, that we would get, you know, wouldn't get something, since we've been a part of this for, for a while, but part of the, you know, that they ask about this grant is, what is your sustainability plan? I don't know, you know, that's kinda difficult to answer, to be honest, and how, and how we move forward, so, I know we asked for a whole lot when we did the safety equipment grant, I mean, about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, and we got a hundred and fifty. I don't want it to be too unreasonable, you know, to ask. So, I certainly want to make the language in the grant that, well, you know, we would like to add potentially, at least don't cut.
Are we gonna, this is not, this has nothing to do with DPI, correct?
Yeah, this comes from the Center of Safer Schools.
Does that part of DPI?
Yes, so they're brands under...
The reason I'm asking that is there gonna be a question of supplanting, since we've already, we're already funding those, are they gonna come back and say, well, you can't pay for what you already do?
Well, the addition, we don't have one at Pollard right now, and I don't know how that's, and the funding can go back to July. So, if, if we were, if we receive a SRO, and that we don't have one in, in position, now we do, it can go back to July to pick up that cost, because right now, we're paying the middle school SROs, we don't have the grant money.
Any of new four, that were just approved by the commissioners. So, I would, I would be in favor of bumping it to ten, for the six we've already got, plus the four that the commissioners just approved, if, I mean, if that's realistic, because now, we don't have to pay for equipment, they've already got a car, they got their equipment, they're gonna have their training, so now we're just talking about salary and benefits.
Now, how specific do you have to be on the application? I mean, you gotta designate what you're applying for to, to, I guess, the level of school, whether it's elementary or middle school.
That's it.
You gotta be specific with the school?
We, we have, because we, the four middle schools have been funded for, and you know, I thanked them for that during the grant, but then, the rest was, we were trying to add to the elementary, so, that was a, I think, a lot easier sale, because we only had two covering eleven schools at the elementary, well, we asked for two more, and then the commissioners added another one, so that, that helped us out a great deal. I can't go back in, the supplanting thing's a, is, is a good point. What we were told over and over was that the funding can go back to, I hope, did I say January, I meant to say July. July one.
Because the last time, January was an issue, right?
That's right, they kept saying, going back, that you can take it back, and I, and that's understandable, because of the six people we have paid out of, out of the grant, if we get the grant again, you certainly can go back and, and pay them. I can certainly ask that question with the state, if people were just recently approved.
And I understand how that could be a fine line, because they were approved July first, but weren't hired until after that, and this goes back to July first, so there's...
And the dilemma is, see, everybody starts school before you're awarded this, so, if you wanted to as SROs, you're gonna have to get approval locally, or use local monies to pay for them, because you don't know whether or not you're getting the grant, then you get the grant, so to me, that's not, we can go back. But that's why I think they made the point of July one.
The reason I think it'd be good to ask for more is because of the other grant we got, where there's a matching portion by the commissioner, if we can show them that we're doing what we can to help offset some of that, we're trying to help them out, because I know Tucker had a real question about us having to match forever, and what, what happens when that grant runs out, are we gonna have to pick up the entire cost? So, I would just say, I'd like to see, say, four middle and six elementary, proportionally, you know, we're still not quite there, because that's all the middle school and half the elementary schools. What do you all think? And it would be picking up some that have already been approved, there's no way around that, even one pilot.
And I'd be glad to ask that question, I mean, if you say four, and I find out later that really we can do two, that's all, and that certainly lets you know that.
I'd love to see it bumped up to ten total. But I, I'm also, I'm like y'all, I, I don't wanna seem too greedy that they say without, but it would be nice if we could try, I, I would go with four, and that way, we can try to look at, we're telling the commissioners that we're trying to do all we can to the state.
I think bumping it a little would be good, because, you know, just to, you know, everything is gonna, just to cover normal increases and stuff, we've been bumping it some.
Now, if I remember right, last night, didn't they give us an amount per that they would fund that too?
And they just put that on this grant, and that, and as Dr. Reeves mentioned, the tiers, that's another thing, because last time, we were tier one, and now we're tier two, which doesn't help us in, in this.
So, the personnel, looks like it's personnel every other year, and, you quit, safety equipment every year?
Two years ago, we, it was all, it was part of the same grant, it was SROs plus safety equipment, but the SRO grant rose for two years, so the last year, we were able to apply for another safety grant, that's where we got the hundred and fifty thousand.
That was the matching?
They think maybe there'll be another safety grant, but budget and all that, they're, they're not sure whether that will be under or not, so there could be a time that I come to you later on and say, there's a safety grant for equipment that is available to us, but right now... that is available to us, but right now it's just the SRO for two years. So if you ask for, like, the 264, that would be one year, and next year 264 again, and then the grant comes back if the 200.
And I don't, I know DPI is not going to let their hand, show their hand, but do you think there's a prob or a chance that, because we've gotten it now for 11 years, that they might start to say, okay, it's not, it's time to start looking at that sustainability?
Or your sustainability plan?
I would hope not, but.
Well, we applied for six the last time, 264.
Yes, sir.
I think there'd be an expectation, at least for the discontinued, the grants we've been receiving for that number. I think that'd be minimal, so I think that's the baseline, at least the baseline.
And I think our, and to be honest, I think our county commissioners have shown the, when we applied for these grants, yes, we'd like to maintain, but what the county's done on top of that is they've added some others for, so we are trying to do, because the goal in all the grants have been having an SRO for building that, that's been, eight years ago, we were putting stuff in, that type of language. So I think the, and which I would like to highlight, but I don't want to take money away, but I want to show them that we are trying, but we do need this 264,000 going forward. But our commissioners and our board has made that a priority, and we are looking at sustainability by having an SRO, so it's kind of, what do you, what do you ask for?
If we apply for 10, plus the three high schools we're covering ourselves, that's 13 out of 19. That shows we're putting skin in the game.
Right.
Shows the commissioners are, and it still means that we're not asking them for all 19 yet.
I say less than 10.
Yeah, that's a pretty good thing. Going from 264 to 440.
440, yes, that's 44,000 per, if they continue that amount, which I would assume is going up.
Well, I think that's going to, they know why you're nothing.
I'm a y'all, I agree with you.
So we go four, four middle and six elementary.
I would like to make sure that there's not a supplanting issue and all that, but if there's not, 10, I mean, that's what I'll.
If there is, then at least ask for the six.
Correct, yes.
And the other question is, if it is, then the four extra ones that were included started July 1st, would they consider that supplanting, since we didn't have them last school?
That is correct.
Okay. So yeah, I think back, the least we would ask for would be six, if they tell us we can't.
Correct.
Good with everybody?
Right.
Okay. Think we would vote to approve that, just we've got it in the minutes we discussed?
If you want to take a vote, take.
Okay, let's do that, just so we got it on record, that we are authorized, Kevin, to apply for the safe schools. What's the exact title on the cabinet?
School Resource Officer Grant.
For the safe.
I'll make a motion that you apply for 10, four middle schools, six elementary.
Okay, motion and second. You got that, Mr. Bledsoe, Mr. Whitaker?
Okay, got it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you, I think it's good that we've got it on the record for the commissioners, so they can see we're serious about this. Okay, school calendar updates?
Board members, I wanted to give you a couple of updates. Mr. Atkins is here right on time, thank you, Mr. Atkins. Let's start with Mountain Park Elementary School, so as you know, we went and requested from the Board of Elections to move the two polling sites, one at Mountain Park, one at Westfield, and you, I think, we had three or four board members that were able to attend the last Board of Elections meeting. We worked out, met with some of our parents, parent advisory council from Westfield, and another group of parents, and so through a lot of conversations and multiple meetings, there's been some progress made with Westfield Elementary School in that that voting location has been moved from the school to Jesper Row Baptist Church. I want to publicly thank that congregation for accepting that responsibility and that civic duty. I think it helps us at Westfield and certainly takes that, all of that away from the school day. And we know that while we fully support democracy and elections, it's just in today's times, it's hard to have in our schools. Knowing that, we've got Mountain Park, met with the fire chief there, met with the Board of Elections, they looked at that site, and there were some parking issues and some other issues, and it just felt like the school was still the best site. So at Mountain Park, they still want to continue to have elections inside the gymnasium. And so what I'm recommending to you is that we, on the Tuesday, first Tuesday in November, is that we have a remote learning day for our students at Mountain Park Elementary School, so that they're not on campus the day that voting occurs on, in the gymnasium that day. I think that's the safest avenue for us, and takes away all the distractions for the kids and the staff there. So that would be my recommendation on that first Tuesday in November, and I think if we go ahead and make that decision now, like that announcement, it gives the principal and the faculty plenty of time to plan. Any questions?
You feel about that? I think it's the right thing to do, not only safety, but disruption of classes and the routine the kids have gotten into by that point, I think it's a good idea.
And we've got any school as to an adoption, I mean, would they recommend that as well?
I think they would prefer that option, just based on previous experiences. I know in discussions with Mr. Scott, that was always something that he and I talked about. I have not had those discussions with Ms. Lambert, and she's just starting the school year, but just based on previous discussions, I do think the school would be in favor of that. I anticipate a large turnout in November, and I just think it's probably the best option for us all the way around.
And Mountain Park typically has one of our turnout rates in the county for elections.
May I wish you may approve the virtual day?
Motion by Mr. Hutchins to approve virtual day at Mountain Park Elementary. Second by Mr. Goldens. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you. You've also got on your first two days of school, just two days.
The board members, as you know, we had hurricane came through on Thursday. We were supposed to start school on August the 8th. I thought that was certainly the right decision to move the school back two days and start on Monday. We had a really good start last week, really pleased with our schools. I want to deal, Mr. Atkins, to come forward and just bring you options. We don't have to make a decision right now on the school calendar. You may have some questions, and this is something, over the next two weeks, if you want to put this on the agenda for the work session or the board, the business meeting in September, we certainly can, but we will have some employees and parents wanting to know how we're going to handle those two days. So, Mr. Atkins, will you review the options with the board?
Sure. Currently, our calendar that you approved has 1,068 hours scheduled. So you could certainly forgive those two days, that's six instructional hours per day, and you still have 1,056 hours in the calendar, which is still 31 hours over the required 1,025 a year. You can simply do that, or you can start looking at the calendar that we have now, looking at days like September the 20th or October the 10th, January the 2nd and 3rd, any of those workdays, we can make student days to make those two days up, if we chose to do that throughout the year as well. Now, if we, if we were to make a day up on what's scheduled for an annual leave day, then we would have to move that annual leave day somewhere else, because 10-month employees have to have those built into their calendar for them.
I remember when we, when we first considered the options, one was, one was the 12th, right?
Yes.
So is this, could we just mirror what that was? Is that one of the options you're laying out?
I think you would change it a little bit, because if you took this calendar and just, and just converted it to an August 12th start date, that would only be 176 days. And I don't think that we, I don't think we submitted an option that was 176 days. It would probably be a little bit different from this one.
I didn't remember that one of the options was starting on.
What was the next weekend?
So you're saying it would be 1,068 student instructional hours? Yes. So if we forgave those two days, they would still earn annual leave time if they were the staff. It wouldn't affect the staff negatively.
No, because they're working, they had an optional teacher workday, both days.
I'd say forgive them.
You'd still be over, right?
Yeah, 32 hours.
That's an overager.
Yeah, still have a 31-hour.
31.
Well, I think you've got to consider how many snow days you might have, because sometimes we live in a situation where we have to make things work. Give some days, because you miss so many days, you end up missing 15-day snow day, which, you know, don't have a crystal ball, so you don't know.
So what's left would leave us with five, five days to play with?
We have been situated for, we.
About five.
Run 31 hours, we still have five days to play with.
Yes.
I agree, I think, I think we're giving them, because I, I think, really, like, for example, the 10th of October, we made such a big deal out of, we want that to be, you know, a required teacher workday, so they can be there for parent-teacher conferences, so.
Sure.
I'd be in favor of parent-teacher conferences. Thought we changed it to required, didn't we change it?
It's a workday for optional teacher conference.
Oh, optional teacher conference, it's a required teacher workday, I got you, yeah.
After what I see, I still like it.
Do we, is it time we need to make that decision now, or do we? Because I think we've got some, some days built in in the spring. Typically build some in the spring, right, for snow days in case, but we hadn't had it for two years.
We have not, but when you look at the calendar, they would be the days that are currently listed as workdays in some way, shape or form. We've had bad winters in the past where we even got into spring break at times too, but that hasn't happened in a long time, but it could.
I remember once upon a time, we had Saturday school.
Yes.
I did that when I was in school, and boy, did that mess the world up. I had my plans for Saturday, I didn't want. Okay, so it sounds like we would, we would keep the same calendar, but forgive August 8th and 9th, which still leaves us at 1,068 days, or 1,056 days.
1,056, and it makes the first semester 87 student days, which we've had plenty of 87 student day semesters.
81, not 87 and 90.
89.
89, which is close, okay.
I will say that there has been overwhelmingly amount of support from staff, thanking the board and administration for making that decision.
And parents.
And parents, making that decision, and the staff really liked those extra workdays, having the four schools, so we're going to consider that. Next calendar.
But I'll make a motion.
Thank you, new motion, Mr. Motion by Mr. Hutchins to make those changes to our calendar?
Second.
Mr. Goldens, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you, I think that's the right decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Now, let's just not have any other bad weather.
I promise.
Neil, if you make those changes on the calendar, so the holidays, we can publicly.
Personally agree with.
Yeah, okay. And then just, let's communicate that out the next leadership team.
Thank you. Okay, our MOAs, pretty much, for mental health, what's that?
Yeah, the Southern is probably, should be, we're a little bit ahead of schedule.
I'm not a motion to approve. See, you don't even have to walk in.
That'd be great.
How are you doing?
I'm great.
These are continuations?
They are, they've been a continuation year after year at four of our schools, and they all have plans that we're required to do for the state. It's the ones that Fred helped us to develop, he talks on the, helped us write them. It's just a continuation for this year.
Same, same partners that we did work for. And we typically, if we, if we do use these, then we can try to build them for Medicaid, whatever, for the cost.
Correct, they do all that.
Yeah, okay. All right, any questions, have a chance to review them, they're the same ones we have.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Bledsoe to approve the four MOAs for our mental health plan.
Motion and second.
No, he motioned. Okay, I need a second, because we don't have a motion. Second by Mr. Hutchins. Okay. All right, and, yeah, that's just the MOA. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you, you're now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're doing a great job too, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Okay, school lunch visit changes. Change North City last at the other meeting, right, to the 18th. Is there any other changes we've not approved?
The only change, Rockford Elementary requested to not have their day on Halloween, so they requested changing that to the 29th. Cedar Ridge just today asked if they could change their December 5th day to the 17th. I checked calendars, I didn't see any conflicts.
Okay, so right before Christmas?
Is that a Thursday too?
That is on a Tuesday.
Change it from what now?
7th to the 17th.
From the 5th to the 17th, and I'll update that sheet and share it back out with everyone.
And has it had the fleet on there too?
That is correct.
January 13th?
Yes.
So it's a Monday.
So the 17th, Cedar Ridge.
And I think you've already sent the invite to us to change it, right?
Yes.
Show on my calendar, okay.
Pending your approval, of course.
Blue eye, it's clear.
It's clear, and he's got a clear date on his calendar.
I'll motion and then somebody else.
I'll motion. Make a motion that we make that change on our calendar.
By Mr. Whitaker to make those changes that we just discussed, Fleet, Rockford and Cedar Ridge. Get a second? Second by Mr. Hutchins. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you very much. All right, and the board meeting dates. So it was January?
That was a request at a June 30th budget session.
Okay, got you.
And go ahead and get that on the calendar.
I got you, but all the other meetings are all, and we're still meeting down at the center as much as we can.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Last year was not, wasn't always available, so, okay. And it looks like November 4th for the business meeting, it'll be in North City, because that's election, election week, yeah, okay. And we wouldn't be able to get that room anyway, would we? Okay, any questions on the adding the 30th for budget approval?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bledsoe to approve the changes, and a second.
My second.
Second by Mr. Whitaker. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you very much. Okay, so all I have left is closed session, correct? Okay, so we did, we have to do, let's do, let's wait to do this, take the vote first, so we know we got it on record that we took the vote on, okay? So we have a quick business we need to discuss with Mr. Johnson on legal issue for closed session. So the comment I need to read is the motion I need will, Department of Education later in closed session for the following reasons, to prevent disclosure of information that is private or confidential under state or federal law, including but not limited to statute 115(c)(319) or 402, pursuant to general statute 143(c)(1811), to discuss rights or material terms of contract or acquisition of real property pursuant to that same statute, and to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial appointment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee pursuant to that same statute. Somebody want to repeat that for me?
I'll make a motion that you do.
Okay, we got, we got a motion by Mr. Hutchins that we put in, and it's funny, the minister, they actually put it in. We need a second.
Before we forget it, I'll say.
Second by Mr. Goldens. All right, and then once we are done, we'll come back out and close the meeting after we come out as closed session, all right? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you, we are now in closed session.